House Bill 1512 related to traffic safety. I'll ask the prime sponsor to come forward to the witness table and then we'll have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to let those who will be testifying publicly that because we have so many people wishing to testify, we're going to ask those to restrict their remarks to about a minute and a half, about 90 seconds. So I hope you can do that. Thanks very much. Go ahead, Steph.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, for the record, this is Corey Patton, staff to the committee. House Bill 1512 relates to the enforcement of moving and non-moving violations. For background, the Department of Licensing adopts and maintains rules that define moving and non-moving violations for certain vehicles. Moving violations, as the name implies, includes any violation committed by the operator of a vehicle while the vehicle is in motion, including specified criminal offenses and traffic infractions. Some examples of criminal offenses that constitute a moving violation would be driving under the influence, negligent driving, and hit-and-run. Meanwhile, examples of traffic infractions that constitute a moving violation include driving the wrong way on a one-way street and failing to signal. Meanwhile, non-moving violations include parking violations, equipment violations, and paperwork violations that relate to insurance, registration, licensing, or inspection. Any person who is signaled by a law enforcement officer for a traffic infraction has the duty to stop. When any person is stopped for an infraction, the officer may detain the person for a reasonable period of time necessary to identify the person, check for outstanding warrants, check the status of the person's license, insurance, and vehicle registration, and complete and issue any notice of infraction. An officer who has received notice of the suspension or revocation of a driver's license from the DOL may stop any vehicle that is registered to that person. Washington State Patrol officers may stop a vehicle to check the operator's license and inspect the vehicle's equipment, and these WSP vehicle stops for license and equipment checks are limited to daylight hours by marked patrol vehicles. Certain violations currently may only be enforced as a secondary action when the operator has been detained for suspected violation of a separate traffic infraction. For example, enforcement of a violation for dangerously distracted driving currently may only be accomplished as a secondary action. The bill before you, House Bill 1512, does three main things. First, the bill establishes a grant program to support local initiatives that provide solution-oriented responses to non-moving violations committed by low-income road users. The bill defines low-income road users as including anybody who is a recipient of public assistance, who is a participant in the Women, Infants, and Children Nutrition Program, who is eligible for Medicaid under state law, or who receives an annual net income of 125% or less of the federal poverty line. The Department of Transportation must administer this grant program and award grants for non-punitive intervention programs. Some examples of these types of programs are included in the bill. They are helmet voucher programs, registration fee offset programs, fix-it tickets, repair vouchers, and community education workshops. The DOT must report annually on the recipients, locations, and types of projects that are funded by these grants. Second, the bill limits the circumstances where peace officers may stop or detain the operator of a vehicle and specifies additional processes that are required for all traffic stops. For purposes of the bill, peace officers defined as including any general authority peace officers, Washington State Patrol commissioned officers, Department of Fish and Wildlife officers with specified law enforcement powers, and limited authority peace officers who similarly have powers of arrest and carry a firearm as a part of their normal duties. Under the bill, such officers are authorized to stop or detain the operator of a vehicle to enforce primary offenses. The bill defines primary offenses as any criminal code violation, any moving violation except for specific violations related to driving with a suspended or revoked license, any safety belt violation, missing or mismatched license plates, an expired vehicle registration of over 12 months, violations related to certain warning devices, and any equipment violation that presents a serious risk of safety to the operator or others on the roadway. The bill defines serious risk of safety to the operator or others on the roadway as meaning based on the totality of the circumstances, it is reasonable for an objective observer to believe that the equipment violation may cause a collision or injury to the operator or other persons in the vehicle's vicinity. Enforcement of any other equipment violations, paperwork violations related to insurance, registration, licensing, or inspection, and specified violations related to driving with a suspended or revoked license may only be accomplished as a secondary action when the operator has already been stopped or detained for one of the aforementioned primary offenses. Upon first contact with the operator, the officer must immediately inform the operator of the reason for the stop and may only question the operator within the scope of that initial reason unless the officer establishes reasonable suspicion sufficient to broaden the scope of that questioning. The officer may request a search of the operator or the vehicle if the initial offense necessitating the stop was either a gross misdemeanor or a felony. Before engaging in the search, the officer must obtain written consent from the operator and provide an oral explanation about a written consent form to explain the purpose of the search, as well as that the search is voluntary and that the operator may ask to speak to an attorney and decline or terminate the search at any point. The form must contain certain information, be available in English and either Spanish or the next most prevalent language spoken in the jurisdiction, and must be explained orally if the operator is unable to read the form. Any evidence that is recovered from a stop that fails to comply with these requirements is inadmissible in any criminal proceeding. Beginning January 1, 2026, officers who stop or detain operators of a vehicle must also report certain information about those stops. Those requirements are expounded in more detail on Page 4 of the written bill analysis. Third, the bill authorizes peace officers to mail a warning of traffic infraction to the registered owner of a vehicle for equipment violations or paperwork violations without needing to stop or detain the vehicle's operator if the infraction is committed in the officer's presence. The final thing that I'll highlight is that the provisions of the bill do not apply to violations that involve commercial motor vehicles. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Any questions? Chair recognizes Representative Griffey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Corey, would a seatbelt violation be considered a primary violation under this proposed change?
Yes, any seatbelt violation is a primary.
Would it follow up?
Yes, please.
One taillight being out, would, do you believe that a reasonable officer could pull that vehicle over?
So that would be considered an equipment violation. A person could only be pulled over for that as a primary offense if it constitutes, the bill defines it as, sorry, I have the language here, as being a serious risk to the safety of the operator or others in the roadway. So it would depend on the totality of the circumstances if that single taillight being enough rises to that level.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. The staff could bring in all those who'd signed in remote so we can refer to them, and we welcome the gentleman from the 37th. Good to see you.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Ranking Member Graham and members of the committee, it's great to be here this afternoon. I know myself, and I assume that you guys are hearing concerns about public safety from your constituents, and road safety is part of public safety. One of the things that I'm hearing about public safety is that there's a law, an air of lawlessness in our society, and I commute from Seattle to Olympia every day, and you see some pretty crazy things on the road. You see excessive speeding, you see people weaving through traffic, see people, what you might think of as dozing, and I can imagine that accumulates to people's feelings of lawlessness. I also think that it accumulates to some of our really high traffic deaths that we've seen just last year. As of November, we had 645 traffic deaths, and I think that's unacceptable. And so I'd like to make sure that we take steps towards reducing the number of traffic deaths that we have through enhanced road safety. And so this bill prioritizes our law enforcement officers' time towards enforcing traffic infractions that I believe more closely accrue to road safety than other ones like small paperwork issues. If I could use a crude example, if there were people walking down the street yielding machetes, I'd rather have our law enforcement officers addressing those folks with machetes as opposed to writing tickets for parking violations. They're both illegal things, however, one is a much more serious safety risk, and I'd love for our officers to first address those safety risks before the other more minimal illegal activities. I'd also like to take a couple of seconds to clarify some misunderstandings that we've had about this bill. This is the fifth year that we've come back, and we keep continuing to iterate on this and take feedback. We'll talk about some of the changes we made. However, there's a perception that this bill would prevent law enforcement officers from pulling people over and would reduce the number of interactions that law enforcement officers have with the public, and that's just not true. I think most of us, as we're on the road, we understand that we could have a law enforcement officer sit there, and there's enough speeders, there's enough dangerous drivers, that they could pull people over all day without having to look for expired tabs or a broken taillight. And so I want to reinforce that this doesn't stop officers from pulling people over, it just redirects their attention at things that are more tightly correlated with traffic safety. As I mentioned, we've been working on this for quite some time. Just in the interim, we went with over 14 different law enforcement agencies, 12 community groups, and 30 legislators, and have been making changes to the bill to incorporate feedback and concerns that folks had. So a couple of examples of those is that the original bill prevented law enforcement officers from pulling over anyone with a misdemeanor warrant, with a few exceptions of domestic violence and some other more serious misdemeanor warrants. This version lets a law enforcement officer pull over a person with any type of warrant. Previously, you couldn't pull over someone with expired tabs. Through conversations, we agreed that that could lead towards people not wanting to pay their tabs ever, so we amended that to a year, so that if someone had just forgotten to pay their tabs, they may have some extra time before having an in-person contact with law enforcement. However, after an amount of time, a year in this case, where we thought it was blatant and excessive, then they can be pulled over. Another example of a change is that seatbelts were mistakenly omitted. As you clarified with staff, seatbelts are a reason to be pulled over because that does accrue to road safety. Another thing is around when the officer must record why the person was pulled over. Originally, it was you must record the reason for pulling someone over before you approach a car. Now, the officer has discretion to record that when they feel best fit, and that came from discussions with law enforcement where they, they said that the longer they are on the side of the road, there is more chance that they get hit and there's another accident. So let them address the person, move on, and then they can go to a safe place to record. So we've really been trying to work with the law enforcement community to perfect this bill as much as possible, and I'm sure all of you know how hard that is to do for legislation. The last thing that I'll end on is through the work we did last year, we did have a pilot proviso for the community grant, and that's a part of this bill that remains popular throughout, throughout whoever you talk to. And there were some great examples of both law enforcement and community groups who did help community members get their small maintenance things fixed on their car, and so that's been a great place of mutual collaboration on this bill. So I'd love to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thanks very much. Other questions? Chair recognizes Representative Griffey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I talked to you about this last year. So I work domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. I spend a lot of time working there. We encourage those that may be thrown in a trunk, and a human trafficking sort of thing is to rip out all the wires you possibly can to try to make sure that one of the taillights goes out. My concern still is that if, if an officer sees one taillight and maybe the center stoplight, they won't pull him over, and that survivor, that person that's being trafficked, will not have that, that chance at, at freedom and being rescued. I still have that concern. Do you have any ideas about what we can do about that?
Sure. I mean, I guess I would ask you back, how often has a survivor been found by a taillight being out? What I will say is I do have data from the Washington State Police where over 11 million traffic stops, only contraband was found in only 0.3% of those. So that means that three out of every 1,000 traffic stops was found contraband.
I'd be willing with a human, I'd be willing to take the chance, but that's me.
I mean, and to me, that's a very ineffective use of our law enforcement resources, and we've been hearing that we need to hire more law enforcement officers, we're asking them to do too much. And so I would love to make sure that we're using that law enforcement time in the best way possible. And in jurisdictions, in some jurisdictions where we've, or not we, where this has been implemented, we've seen increases of 200% in DUI arrests. To me, that is a great use of law enforcement resources, and so I'd like to see some of that policy come here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions? Chair recognizes Representative Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Rep. Street, for your presentation. My question is, you were mentioning that the, the new version of the bill does not inhibit law enforcement's ability to pull an individual over because of a misdemeanor warrant. The, the concern that I have is that one of the primary ways that law enforcement catches individuals with misdemeanor warrants is they pull them over for, let's say, a non-moving violation. They run the individual's name, and that's when they discover the person has a misdemeanor warrant. So it seems to me that this does still create significant impediments to law enforcement's ability to catch people with all sorts of warrants, Department of Corrections warrants, felony warrants, misdemeanor warrants, because they don't have that initial contact. It's fairly difficult to tell who's driving a vehicle until you pull the person over.
Well, I guess I would argue there that we aren't, shouldn't be using traffic stops to find people with warrants. Like, I mean, if we wanted to do that, then why not just let law enforcement pull over anyone, anytime, and see if they have a warrant? We should be pulling people over for a specific reason, and then if something comes out of that, sure, we can figure that out. And again, I go back to the fact of why are we pulling something, someone over for, on the road and for traffic infractions? I would love to be pulling people over because we believe that will make the road safer. And I don't think that an expired tab or that a, a missing taillight is strongly correlated with safety. So I mean, if we wanted to talk about other ways to find people with warrants, I think there's lots of ways we could do that. Some may or may not be constitutional based on due process and preventing searches and things like that. So I think that gets to be a slippery slope, but we'd be happy to talk about it more.
Chair recognizes Representative Burnett.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Two quick questions for the representative here. One, you, you made mention to the 14 agencies that were, I guess, talked with in this, consulted in this. At any time, did that group or yourself do a ride-along with what I would call the, the person on the street and for, maybe doing DUI aggressive patrols in the evening or anything like that?
Yeah, so not this year, but, so I introduced this bill in 2023, and as part of that, I did go on a ride-along with Washington State Patrol. In that evening, we pulled over, I believe it was either two, at least two drunk drivers, maybe three. We responded to two hit-and-runs, and we responded to another car that had a missing license plate. And so to me, that reinforced the, the message that we have plenty of, like, I would say that all of those are things that we want our law enforcement officers investigating. And so to me, it said, we have plenty of issues that are safety-related, that we want our law enforcement officers acting on. Their hands are full, and so by asking them not to follow up on tabs or not to follow up on one broken taillight, that is not precluding or snipping their wings in any means.
A second question. You mentioned about the difference between keeping our roadways and the public safety there. Do you differentiate and separate the two as far as what the duties are for our law enforcement officers across the state of Washington and the local agencies that they work for? Are you precluding and separating what their official duties are to do to enhance public safety across the board?
Could you clarify that a little?
Well, what I hear you saying is specifically to traffic enforcement, that it's only to keep our roadways safe. But yet, when you're talking about identifying somebody with a warrant, the way the process works, you have to have information. If you run a registered, a, a vehicle registration, and that registration comes back that the person that's registered has an active warrant, first of all, it has to be extraditable, it has to fit the criteria within their agency, then it has to also be, you have to be able to, can you identify if that is a male or a female registered? And if you can tell, and if it's at night, you could stop that person to make identification. If you walked up to the car at that point in time, and it was a male that had, that was the registered voter with the warrant, and you see that there's a female driver, you have to separate and discontinue that, that stop. And so that is part of it, but where I go deeper with this is that public safety is much deeper and broader than just road safety, although that's an amazing component, but many crimes and many things are, are stopped and hindered through that process along the way, and, and multiple written warnings, not necessarily citations. So, and I guess I can save this argument later. I would probably say there would be a good time for this group to consider amendments to this bill potentially that says maybe they're, they could do and enforce but underwritten warnings, what they call field contacts, and you could actually document that, because what you end up with is multiple offenders taking advantage of, of the system. So, thank you.
I guess I would argue that the data that I've seen shows the opposite, right? With, of those 11 million traffic stops, only 0.3% of them resulted in some contraband being found, and I think that our law enforcement officers likely have a much higher rate when they're pulling people over based on other things. I think 0.3% effectiveness of something is incredibly low, and we should be doing anything that we can to increase that.
Thank you. Chair recognizes the ranking member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this legislation. I, I can tell that your heart is in the right place with this. The question that I have is, you know, in the past, with, say, police pursuit, when there was changes made with that, we saw an enormous jump in crimes happening that I believe were an unintended consequence, but a consequence nonetheless. Washington State has become one of the most dangerous states. We have a major problem with substance abuse, people dying of drug overdoses, and there, we have quite a few firearms bills that we're also navigating, including firearms in vehicles. So it's been my understanding in the past that whether it is gang issues, firearms issues, illegal drugs, that type of thing, do you see that there could be a possibility with this type of legislation where officers are not able to pull these cars over, that we may see a higher jump in crimes that we really can't afford to have more of in this state?
Yeah, I'm not sure how I would get to that conclusion, because, like, personally, I don't think that someone having a broken taillight is correlated with someone having a gun or having drugs or having done some other crime. I don't think that someone having an expired tab is correlated with those other types of crimes. I think that spending more time on speeding would reduce the severity of our accidents. I think that spending more time on, like, weaving or drifting in a lane would result in more DUI arrests, and so I think that we would actually have more safety, road safety, which would include more public safety. So I actually think it does accrue to those, those goals. And again, as I, that sort of that stat that I mentioned, if it's just about pulling people over, that is a extremely ineffective way of finding those other crimes, because, again, it's 0.3% over 11 million, and that's a very large sample size, so it seems to be a relatively good stat that also came from our law enforcement agency.
Good. Well, thanks very much for answering the battery of questions from the panel here, and we're going to move into public testimony.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Want to give those who either are appearing in person or remotely on House Bill 1591 related to defendant survivors, that we are clearly not going to have time to hear that bill, so I wanted to let the prime sponsor know that we'll be deferring action. I would love to hear the bill tomorrow, but I'm not sure if that violates the five-day rule, or if we could waive it. We will have time to hear the rule, the, the bill tomorrow. And I want to apologize profusely to Elizabeth Hendren and David Martin, who came all the way down here. Maybe I'll cover your gas costs.
Representative Goodman, so if you want to hear that bill without waiting the five days, you might want to open the bill?
Oh, there we go.
And then suspend.
Okay.
So you could ask for?
Yeah.
The sponsors.
All right. So, yes, we are holding the hearing on House Bill 1512 open, and we will now open the hearing on House Bill 1591. And we're now going to hold the hearing on 1591 in suspense, and we'll continue it at some other time. That was, that worked. So we're back to House Bill 1512, and apologies again to Elizabeth Hendren and David Martin. Everyone else was, was remote, so, but we will have adequate time to hear that bill tomorrow. And Elizabeth, perhaps you could do it remotely from Seattle, so, I think I was joking about the gas costs. Although gas prices seem to be coming down, but, okay. We will now proceed with public testimony on House Bill 1512. Once again, we have only about 90 seconds per person, or maybe, maybe even less. Let's hear first remotely from Curtis Robinson and then Nikia Hunter. Curtis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair, Ranking Member, Committee, and Sponsors, I'm Curtis Robinson, Spokane, Washington, 99202. I'm with the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability. I did the time. And Washington for Black Lives, I'm here in support of HB 1512, and I urge you to also be so. When facing the resistance of such a legislation, we must ask ourselves, what are the agendas behind the resistance, especially when the real question should be, how can we do a better job at protecting all peoples, and why are we not addressing the obviously racially violent behavior within our law enforcement industry that has been proven to be unleashed on communities of color? I have an agenda for our evergreen state, and it is a place where black and brown people are not four times more likely to be killed by law enforcement than their white counterparts, where our law enforcement family resources are allocated more efficiently and appropriately, which by happenstance is safer for them and for us. A place where we are addressing and cultivating minor traffic, or are curtailing minor traffic infractions with solution-oriented responses for non-moving violations for low-income users. I do have an agenda. It is public safety for all, not just for some, and it is still, and it's direct correlation, public safety for all, or correlation, traffic safety for all. I ask you again, what is their agenda? And I, and I ask you, what is yours? Thank you for your time.
Okay. We're done. Okay, thank you. Let's hear from Nikia Hunter.
Thank you very much, Representative Goodman and Commission. My name is Nikia Hunter. I am a member of the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability, as well as several other boards across the state of Washington, here today in support of House Bill 1512. Pardon me. Every day lives are lost to Washington's roads. In 2023 alone, 810 people died in traffic crashes, the highest in 33 years, and the leading cause was drunk driving, speeding, and distractions. But instead of focusing on these real dangers, too many traffic stops are for minor infractions like a broken taillight or expired registration disproportionately targeting drivers of color and low-income communities. House Bill 1512, the Traffic Safety for All bill, changes that. It prioritizes enforcement where it matters most, on reckless and impaired drivers, while ensuring minor infractions don't become financial traps. Officers can still issue citations, but through mailed warnings and state funding repair vouchers, we help struggling families comply with the law without unnecessary stops that escalate tensions. This bill isn't anti-law enforcement, it's pro-public safety. It lets officers focus on real threats, saves responses, and builds community trust. Safer roads, smarter policing, justice for all. Join us in supporting House Bill 1512. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. If, let's see here, James McMahon, Candace Bach, and Jeff DeVeere could all come forward. And in the meanwhile, let's hear from David Settlemeyer. Yes, David Settlemeyer, you are with us. Please proceed. I see Chief Smith there, Brian Smith. Please go ahead.
Yeah, Chair Goodman, members of the community, safety community, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brian Smith. I'm the police chief for the city of Port Angeles. I am here to express my strong opposition to House Bill 1512. I've testified in opposition during prior sessions, previous versions. House Bill 1512 proposes significant restrictions on law enforcement in the area of traffic stops. It adds complexity, it adds procedure requirements, adds training requirements, and adds time-consuming reporting requirements. This prescriptive approach will reduce our productivity and will reduce our overall capacity to stop vehicles. While our community members here, for example, consistently ask our officers and our deputies to engage in more regular and more visible traffic enforcement, the possibility of being stopped for a vehicle code violation incentivizes in all of us voluntary compliance. And traffic stops are a essential tool identifying and preventing more serious crimes. During these stops, officers sometimes uncover impaired drivers, stolen vehicles, and invisible with arrest warrants. These interactions also serve as a visible deterrent for unsafe driving and help ensure that vehicles that are on the road are safe. We need to empower our officers to do their jobs effectively, not restrict their ability to enforce the laws that keep us all safe. For these reasons, I urge you reject House Bill 1512 and consider its broader implications for community safety and effective law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's hear now from the panel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. I'm James McMahon, Policy Director with the Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, here to testify opposed to this bill today. I want to preface my comments. I'll primarily focus on Section 3. We actually support Section 2. Section 4 is a little bit goofy, but with some amendments, we think we could turn it into something positive. We reject the implication that an interaction with a law enforcement officer is more dangerous to the public than the equipment violations in this bill. Washington State traffic fatalities are up 51, 51% in this state since 2019. This is a terrible time to consider this bill. If the legislature wants a person to be able to drive a car without headlights or taillights, we recommend that you simply just eliminate those provisions from the law. To keep those provisions on the books but prevent police from enforcing them, we think undermines the rule of law. It undermines, further undermines, the public's trust in policing while also placing the public in danger. We find it curious to hear proponents say this helps us by prioritizing our time on more things that matter. It falsely presumes that we would pull somebody over for something like a broken taillight and avoid responding to the, for example, machete-wielding people. Our experience in Austin, our experience in Seattle, our experience in San Francisco, Minneapolis, Denver, New York, St. Louis, and others have shown that less stops equal more traffic collisions and fatalities. And finally, Mr. Chair, Section 3 Sub 5 defines a non-moving violation. With advance apologies to Mr. Patton, I think you need to ask your staff to write you a list of what offenses and infractions fall under that. If you're okay with people driving around within those conditions of vehicles, then just simply make those things lawful. Don't prevent our ability to enforce the law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. Candace Bach, representing the Association of Washington Cities, also here in opposition. You heard from the chief in Port Angeles that they're already prioritizing their law enforcement resources. And unfortunately, that's the situation that almost every department is in. They don't have enough to go to every make every traffic traffic stop that their community would like them to make. That's the kind of the number one thing they get asked to do more of. And we're concerned that this is going to reduce the the likelihood of those traffic stops with kind of unclear, confusing requirements, and additional reporting requirements. I also want to highlight our concerns over enforcing car tabs. Nobody likes car tabs. Nobody likes paying that car tab fee, but it is an important revenue source for both state and local transportation systems. By making it so that you don't have to renew your tabs, essentially, you're not going to face enforcement for a year. You know, some of our, unfortunately, some some folks out there are going to take those chances, and that's going to reduce revenues at both the state and local level. And then finally, I want to just touch on that Section 4. That might be a little bit goofy. To quote my colleague here, I would never say that about legislation. It it authorizes a warning for an infraction that an officer viewed. We actually think we can already send a warning. This is one of the things we use volunteers to do, is send a warning to their neighbors that they might have sped through a neighborhood. So I think we need to clean that up. If the intent is to allow you to mail an infraction, that's different than authorizing them to mail a warning. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good afternoon, Chair Goodman, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Jeff Devere. I'm here on behalf of the Washington Council of Police and Sheriffs, and I've spent most of my life in traffic safety. So I come at this with a little bit of experience. First, we want to acknowledge the folks that have sat down and talked to us about this bill. For the last five years, I think Representative Street said, unfortunately, we're still not able to support this bill. If this is truly about safety, this is not the way to approach safety. We flat out disagree that the concerning trend that we are seeing in in the deaths and injuries on our road are because of a lack of focus. It's the result of a virtual elimination of traffic law enforcement across our state. Most of our agencies no longer have traffic law enforcement units dedicated to that function. And those who do do and do focus on collision-causing violations such as speed, distracted driving, DUI, and occupant protection, traffic safety does grants and says, go out and focus on these things so we can reduce those. With the passage of this bill, about 1 in 10 DUIs will not be apprehended. That is a statistic. It's data. It came from the Washington State Patrol the last time that we testified that about this. That is a hard fact, that some DUIs will not be apprehended if we're unable to stop cars. This is not the direction that we should be going when we have so many tragedies on our roadways today. We've always supported reasonable and efficient collection of data. I wish we had data, and it needs to be funded so that we can have a conversation without emotion. And lastly, we urge you to be clear with your expectations. To place an officer in the middle of the night, making a decision as to what is a serious risk or not, is an unfair position to put them in. These laws have been considered in committees over and over again to promulgate them to say, these are dangerous, and people should be stopped for them. If you no longer think that, please be clear with law enforcement, so that we are clear what you would like us to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All very instructive comments. We're going to now hear from those testifying remotely, including Stacy Tauber, Kelly Moore, and John Choi. Stacy, are you with us? Yes, you are. Please go ahead.
I am here. Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Stacy Tefloibor. I'm an immigration resource attorney with the Washington Defender Association. And I'm testifying in support of this bill because it will improve the safety of Washington's immigrant communities by interrupting the traffic stop-to-deportation pipeline. Any encounter with law enforcement carries a risk of triggering immigration enforcement, even when it is technically prohibited. Police and sheriffs are known to call on Customs and Border Protection or ICE for translation assistance during traffic stops, which heightens tensions and creates a risk of immigration arrest. All of this exacerbates the already existing fear and distrust of law enforcement in our immigrant communities, making them reluctant to call on the police when needed, and increasing the risk of noncooperation. Limiting, sorry, limiting traffic stops to those required for imminent safety concerns while increasing support for driver safety programs will keep all Washington residents safer. This bill promotes equity, reduces unnecessary law enforcement encounters, and builds trust within our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Kelly Moore, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, committee members. I'm Kelly Moore, Deputy Director of Legislation at the Policing Project, here to testify in support of HB 1512. State and local governments across the country have passed similar measures, and I'd like to speak about what we've learned from their experiences. As you've heard, HB 1512 would free up police to spend their time on the most impactful traffic enforcement. Impaired driving, distracted driving, and speeding are linked with 87% of Washington's roadway deaths. Police would have more time to focus on them. They stop making non-safety stops as provided in this bill. Jurisdictions with similar restrictions have seen traffic accidents and deaths fall. This committee has heard that non-safety stops are important to find evidence of crime and find impaired drivers. The data disagrees. Looking for serious crime and minor traffic violation simply doesn't work. Searches from such stops are less productive. The prime sponsor spoke about recovery of contraband. To get more specific about firearms, California has some instructive data. Their law enforcement found firearms in 0.03% of their traffic stops. Moreover, research shows that overall crime rates simply just do not go up and down based on frequent traffic stops. And law enforcement already has strong tools for finding impaired drivers that are not lessened by this legislation. In short, non-safety stops have so many downsides and not many benefits. Redirecting police to enforce more serious traffic offenses is the right call for community safety. Thank you.
Thank you. John Choi, please proceed.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the Community Safety Committee in Washington. I am John Choi. I am the elected chief prosecutor at Ramsey County, Minnesota, which is home to St. Paul, our capital city. And I'm here today to share with you our story about what we did three and a half years ago, working with my law enforcement chiefs, four of the chiefs in my jurisdiction. I have nine cities. That's the three largest together. What we did was, we created a policy that is very similar to what is in your bill, not the specifics, but moving away from non-public safety traffic stops, and focusing on the types of traffic stops that really matter to our safety, like DWI, careless driving, all of those things. And during that time period, we also engaged research from the Justice Innovation Lab at George Watch University to study the impacts. And what they found was that there was no impact whatsoever on anything to do with crime. In fact, what it did was incorporated and enhanced the trust between law enforcement and our safety officials. And we developed out alternatives, just like you have in this bill, where we could, and we worked with private philanthropy to fund all of those things. So we have a lot more data to share. Hard to tell all tell all of you in 90 seconds, but please reach out if there's anything that we can do to share just the information that we have been able to achieve here in Ramsey County, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Chair recognizes Representative Burnett.
Thank you, Chair Goodman. Mr. Choi, could you advise, I don't know where your study comes from, all of Ramsey County or St. Paul, Minnesota, can you advise what the crime trend is there in the last four or five years, please?
Yeah. Thank you for that question, Representative. We lead the nation in reductions in auto theft by a huge margin. And again, that is because of partnerships in our community. We've improved our clearance rate from about 30% to 60% on non-fatal shootings. We have a homicide clearance rate of about 90%. And so on a lot of public safety factors, we are an outlier with regard to reducing crime. And we do that because we have a lot of trust between our public and our police, and the police are a part of our community. And we work on listening to our community to work on initiatives like this. And it's made all the world of a difference. The increase in trust and the alternative program that we launched out there is really in, just the thank you letters that our chiefs have been getting, I've read some of them. They're amazing. And there is a world where I think where we've improved fairness and justice, we actually improve safety. And so we are a jurisdiction that is an outlier on a number of important crime statistics. We used to have over 100 carjackings in our community. We got that number down to about 28 last year, and we're going to keep working at it with some of the work that we're doing with our community and our police together. And that's the key, is together.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Choi. Very instructive information. Really appreciate it. That will, apologies to Arthur West. I see you there. But if you could submit comments in writing. And Deanne Glover, I see you way back there. And if you could also, if you wish, submit any comments in writing.